Welcome to the U N A School District Board, uh, Board Meeting. Today is October ninth, twenty twenty four. The meeting is being held at U N A School District Boardroom, eight twenty six South fifteen hundred East in Naples, Utah. President of the meeting is President Dave Shivers, Vice President Tanya McKee, Todd Massey, Denise Maynard, uh, our interim Business Administrator Kim Barnhurst, and myself, Superintendent Dr. Rick Woodford, and Robin McClellan is, uh, is excused. The time is four oh two.
Welcome, everybody. We're gonna get started and rolling along. They, um, we're glad to have everyone here, glad to be here ourselves. Um, we're gonna start off with a reverence. Tanya Baumgarten, our Ashley Elementary Principal, is going to offer that for us.
Our dear heavenly Father, we're so grateful to be gathered here today as educators. We're grateful for the opportunities that we have to influence the lives of these students and these young people. And we recognize the importance of the role that we play in their lives and pray that thou will guide us and direct us as we make decisions that will affect them. We are so grateful for where we live and for the freedoms and the wonderful things that we enjoy. And we thank thee so much for these blessings and pray humbly for these things in the name of our Savior, even Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Tanya. We're gonna start out with leadership, um, governance. And so we're gonna tie, turn the time over to Superintendent Woodford for that.
Okay, thank you, President. Uh, just wanna just remind everybody that we are starting a book study. Uh, it's titled The Four Disciplines of Execution. And, uh, this, this is, uh, written by, uh, Chris McChesney, um, and Sean Covey, um, and Jim Holling. And, uh, it's, it's actually turned into a quite a training program, uh, for organizations and schools through the Covey Institute. Uh, but what I'd like to do is just, just share some information in the introduction. And then I've asked each board member, uh, I've given them a little bit of an assignment to share each of the, uh, just an overview and introduction of each of the disciplines. So to start, um, I'd, I'd like to read just out of, off of page, the bottom of page three. It's the second to the last paragraph. It, it talks about, uh, behavior change, um, strategies and, and how difficult it can be, uh, to implement those. It says, "Behavior change strategies are very difficult, uh, from stroke of the pen strategies. You can't just order them to happen because executing them requires getting people, often a lot of people, to do something different. And if you've ever tried to get other people to change their ways, you know how tough it is. Changing yourself is, is hard enough." Next page, uh, there's a quote. It says, "To achieve a goal that you've never achieved before, you must start doing things that you've never done before," uh, which is probably always the case when you're trying to make changes, right? Page five, it, uh, the third paragraph, it says, "It's, it's natural for a leader to assume the people are the problem. After all, they are the ones not doing what needs to be done. Uh, but, but you would've, you would be wrong. Uh, people are not the problem." Later down in that, further down on that page, second to the last paragraph, I'm gonna read it. It's, it's pretty profound. It says, "One prime suspect behind execution breakdown," uh, and, and this is based on research that, that the author did. So one prime suspect behind execution breakdown was clarity of the objective. People simply didn't understand the goal that they were supposed to execute. In fact, in our initial surveys, we learned that only one employee in seven could name even one of their organizational, organization's most important goals. That's right. Fifteen percent could not even, uh, uh, could not name even one of the top three goals their leaders had identified. The other eighty-five percent named what they thought was the goal, but it often didn't remotely resemble what their leaders, uh, had said. Uh, the, the further from the, from the top of the organization, the lower the clarity. And that was just the beginning of the problems we uncovered. So, so some of the other problems they uncovered were lack of commitment to the goal. Uh, so that was a problem. And then accountability was also an issue. A staggering eighty-one percent of the people surveyed said they were not held accountable for regular progress on the organization's goals. And the goals were not translated into specific actions. Eighty-seven percent had no clear idea what they should be doing to achieve the goal. Our, the author says, "In short, people weren't sure what the goal was, weren't committed to it, didn't know what to do about it specifically, and weren't held accountable for it." So that's kinda, kinda sums up what, what is typical in strategic planning and, and, and continuous improvement for organizations. That's, that's what's typical, right? Uh, then when you add to all of that, this thing we call the whirlwind. And, and if you look at the bottom of page six, uh, the authors described the, the whirlwind. It says, "The real enemy of execution is, is your day job." In other words, it's what we do every day. We call it the whirlwind. It's the massive amount of energy that's necessary just to keep your or, your operation going on a day-to-day basis. And ironically, it's also the thing that makes it so hard to execute anything new. The whirlwind robs from you the focus required to move your team forward. And I think in schools, we really see that. Uh, it's, it's, it's so evident because, oh, you talk to any principal, right? A day doesn't go by where they're not dealing with, with a, a student discipline issue, sometimes multiple, or parents that have concerns, or, you know, a, a staff-related issue. There's so many things in schools that happen that, that really can derail us from some of the important, uh, leadership functions that principals have, that directors have, and sometimes a superintendent as well. So, uh, so we gotta always keep in mind that with that whirlwind being so strong in schools, we need greater clarity and greater focus, greater accountability and greater commitments in order to, uh, to, to bring about the changes that we need, right? So, uh, on the, on page nine, and this summarizes their research. It, it states, "In our initial research with Harris Interactive, we surveyed nearly thirteen thousand people internationally across seventeen different industry groups and completed internal assessments with five hundred different companies. Over the years, we've added to this foundation by surveying almost three hundred thousand leaders and team members. This research has been valuable as a foundation for the principles and, um, in guiding our early conclusions. But the real insights did not come from the research. They came from working with people like you, like us, in, in over fifteen hundred implementations." So they've, uh, Covey has, has implemented, uh, the, the four disciplines, four D X, in fifteen hundred organizations. And that was before they wrote the book. So, so there's a lot of information that they were able to, to, to use and gather and analyze in, in making their recommendations that we find in the book. So with that, um, I'd, I'd like to turn the time over to board members just to do a quick summary of each of the disciplines. So, uh, who'd we decide, uh, was gonna do Discipline One? Okay, wanna go ahead and share that with us? Denise?
Okay, class. My homework was Discipline One. Basically, it's the discipline of focus. And it's talking about how you try to focus on the widely important goal. Cause when you try to do too much, you actually accomplish less. So what they suggest you try to do is try to select on one and/or the max two goals instead of trying to do it all. When you're trying to do everything, your team cannot focus or execute. And so it's really just talking about trying to focus on a set of achievable goals. And that's all I have for the class today.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And let's see, Tanya, I think you had Discipline Two, right?
Yes.
You had two?
Yeah.
So Discipline Number Two talks about putting, uh, these goals into action. And it talks about how there are things, we can set a goal and say, "I want to lose some weight." But if all we do is say, "I wanna lose some weight," we're not gonna see the scale move. So if we look at things that we can actually control, then we can have more success. So if we're actually taking the time to track our calories and know exactly what we're doing with our exercise, how many calories we're burning and what we're taking in, we're actually writing that down, we're gonna have a lot more success than just tracking the scale that's telling us where we're at. So it talks about how a lead measure actually is the thing that we can actually control that actually gives us leverage to accomplish our goals. So the lead measure would be tracking my calories and that. Or like if your car broke down, um, it talked about, like, if you wanna, you want to reduce how often your car breaks down, the only way to really control that is to track how your, your maintenance, track your oil changes, track the things, things you can control. And so it's identifying those things that make the most difference that you can control. I think there were two things. A good lead measure has two basic characteristics. It's predictive of achieving the goal and it can be influenced by the team members. Um, so I think that, that it can be influenced by the team members. We can actually do something about it as a team that would make it a good lead measure if it's not something like that. So if you were growing crops in a field and you, you wanna increase your production, you might know that rainfall, more rainfall will increase your production, but you cannot control that. So that's not a good lead measure. It's something that you as a team can control. Anyway, I thought that was kind of interesting that we have to identify the things that give us the most leverage and that we can actually control.
Yeah, thank you, Tanya. Todd?
Great, I read our email, our text message wrong. I was prepped on two with leads and lags. I thought, we use leads and lags all the time, but, uh, but I'll go, I did read the others. Uh, so, so I'll simply go into that. It's, it's basically, uh, discipline in keeping score. And I always remember, uh, I gotta be careful so I don't offend somebody. But there was a time when we, when my kids were growing up that we actually kept score in junior jazz basketball. And, and there was a rec program that they took away keeping score. And, and not only did it affect the kids, I mean, the kids themselves tried to keep score. And there were those kids on the team that, no matter, no matter what, they, they knew the score. Even though it wasn't posted, they knew the score. And those were your high achievers, if that makes sense. And so when you look at it that way, those are, those are the two things. But as I watched over the years, those, those kids that were in a program that score wasn't being kept and, and they were just there to be happy, they weren't performing at the level they needed to. And when they get older, uh, it affected how they played later in life. And, and I saw that in soccer, I saw it in, uh, especially in basketball. Uh, football, we always kept score and, and, and in my kids' days, we dominated. And we're kinda back to, uh, a win strategy here. But, so it, it does talk a little bit about keeping score and, and, when you put Discipline One and Two together, if, if you have somebody that's focused on that and measures that, and lets everybody know where we're at, you know, like the little basketball player that's running around saying, "We're behind, we're behind." You know, it, you, somebody has to know it. Somebody has to be engaged in that. And those are the, the people that oftentimes you'll put in, in the lead position or to make sure that, that we're keeping, uh, up with, with meeting our, our lead goals. Lag goals, as they fall behind, are very important as far as setting those goals. Usually I assume in a strategic plan, uh, we look at the lag goals as being maybe three or four that are really important to the, to the company or to the, to the school district. And, uh, and remember, those lead goals have to be those individuals that are engaged in keeping score. Sorry, I didn't read through that, but I think.
No, that's good, thank you, thank you. And President, we, we gave you, uh, Discipline Four.
Create a cadence of accountability. So there was two things that really stuck out to me in here. First of all, there was a story about a teenage daughter that went to her dad and he said, "Dad, I wanna use the car." And he said, "Okay, I'll make a deal with you." He said, "You can use the car, but you clean it once a week. And I'll check in with you every Saturday to see how you're doing." So that went on for a few weeks and he'd check in on, on Saturday and the, the car was being kept immaculate. Then her dad got called out of town on, uh, on work. And so, um, he had to skip a Saturday. And it so happened that the next week he had to be gone also, so he skipped another Saturday. And when he come back, the car was a mess because there was no accountability. And then it, another story that it talked about in the, in here, talked about a gentleman that had checked into a motel room. And the motel had decided that they was gonna do everything that they could, that every customer that they ever got was a repeat customer. And they went through a lot of different things, how they was going to do that. But the gentleman that was telling the story, he got up in the morning and, and left to, to go do his, his things that day and left a half-burnt cigar in the ashtray. And when he come back that night, there was a new cigar, the same brand that he liked, laying in the ashtray. And he thought, "Man, that, that's really nice that a maid's paying that close of attention to have here what makes me comfortable, along with a lot of other things." Later, down the road, he checked into another motel. And when he got to his room, why, his brand of cigar was laying in the ashtray when he got to the motel room, because they cared that much about their customers. And so he said, someone asked him, he said, "How come you always stay at the same place?" And he said, "I have to. I have to check in to see if my cigar's gonna be there in that ashtray, and I know it won't be anywhere else." And so, um, you can call, you can call it, um, create a cadence of accountability, but all of us, um, needs to return and report, um, no matter what our positions are. No matter who we are, we have people that we report to. But if we take away that key function, then things break down and things don't happen as they should.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Well, so board members, we, we just got, uh, a, a good introduction to, uh, the four, four disciplines, also called four D X. And I, I just, I know I've, I've said this before, but this has become our model for continuous improvement in U N A School District. We've been using it for several years now. And, uh, for me, as, as the superintendent, it's, it's been quite profound because I think I was one of those guys that felt like I had to write everything down and I had to have everything in our plan and have everything accounted for. But the reality was, it was too much and it was too big and, and, you know, just that old adage, if you're trying to focus on everything, you're really focusing on nothing. And what this has taught me is that the, the more, uh, focus we have, the more clarity we have, and, and the more, uh, this cadence of accountability is so critically important. And it, you know, one thing we've asked our principals to do this year is, is to regularly review their, their data from their leads and their lags with their staff so that there's that regular cadence of accountability. Every time they meet, they, they, they need to be seeing that data. We've also asked them to put compelling scoreboards up in their schools where everyone can see them. And, and that also helps create that cadence of accountability. So, so there's a lot of, a lot of things we've done that have been a direct result of, of studying this book. Uh, we, we've now read this book twice. Well, there's actually an addition for education out that we just recently read. So, uh, so it's, it's really become our, our handbook for continuous improvement. So, so with that, uh, I believe we've already made assignments for, uh, for next week. Um, who had Discipline One? Do you guys remember? Was it Todd?
No, I have one.
You have one? Okay, Tanya has, that's right, Tanya does have one. And, uh, so Tanya, next, next board meeting, if you'll just prepare to facilitate however you wanna do it. Yep. And, and Tanya, you're welcome to make assignments or do whatever you wanna do, uh, to facilitate the book study. Sound good?
Yeah.
All right, great. Okay, uh, President, back to you.
Um, Committee Report, who wants to start out? Okay.
All right, I got a lot, so everybody be ready. Just kidding. Okay, Audit Committee, our audit is done. We don't have the results yet. Uh, huge thanks to Kim and Holly, cause they've been kinda keeping that process going. Uh, they, what we're planning on is the Audit Committee to meet in November and go over the results and everything. And then they'll present in December with the State Auditor. So, that's what's coming up there. Uh, the Risk Committee, we met and we kinda decided, uh, poor Dr. Leece is gonna have to be on that, come to that meeting every time because what we're working on directly relates with her. Um, we're talking about, uh, working on a student injury report and going a little bit detail on that. Uh, we'll meet in December to discuss that a little bit more. And then we talked about our policy with volunteers. Um, we don't have an age limit on our volunteers, they can be any age. So we're gonna kinda try to mirror that a little bit with our employee policy regarding age. And last but not nee, uh, last but not least is I, for U N A School Foundations, cause Robin is in Italy. Uh, they have awarded nine thousand in grants. They don't know, they haven't released who that's to. They're gonna present that in November. And then their huge, their huge fundraiser is in December. It's the Bar D Wranglers at the middle school on December twelfth. Um, and tickets are ready and they're already starting to sell quite a bit. And that was all I have.
You guys know what to do, carry on.
All right, I'll, I'll slip in there next. So our, uh, Financial Committee, we met, uh, earlier this week and, uh, and we chatted a little bit about buses. We chatted a little bit about, uh, you know, the direction with electric bus and some of those things. We'll chat about that more in our, uh, I think, work session at least. And, uh, also, uh, talked about maybe the purchase of the new ones. But, and then maybe tracking where we're at with, with some of those, uh, expenses and, and a way to, to track our, our savings and our losses, I guess, uh, on fuel and those type of things. And so, um, we spent quite a bit of time because of me on that, but that's all right. And then we talked, we, we did go over a little bit of the findings, uh, and, and where we're at in some of our fund balances uh, and where we'll be, some of our fund balances. We'll, we'll go through that a little bit more in depth next month, right, next month. But it, uh, some of them may be, uh, be concerning, but yet I think we, some of, some of, personal goals as well as I believe a board goal was, was to kinda get that fund balance down a little bit. We found one of those, I believe Fund Thirty-Two is, is increasing a little bit more than what we had anticipated. There's some reasoning, we talked a little bit about that reasoning and we can share that more later. But, uh, as a whole, uh, with the building of the, uh, new school, it's, our expenditures seem to be on track, uh, on track. And I think, uh, in a way, I, it's great that we can build a facility of such, uh, the way we have. And, uh, and I always, I always put my two cents in. When we, we look at interest rates, uh, Kim mentioned, it's, it's great to have a surplus when interest rates are high. But remembering that average is, is only about one point three, not five point three. And so it's great for these couple of years, but over long-term, it's not great to have huge amounts because when you look at interest rates, uh, your buying power decreases much faster than your interest rate increases. And so I think we made that decision, uh, a couple of years ago and, and have been working that, that path. And, and I think we're getting closer. I think that was Kim's biggest concern as she saw some increases in that Fund Thirty-Two. And, and I, I don't think it's a, it's a game changer, but we, we can definitely work on that. And what else was there? Holly, there's one more thing. And, oh, the benefits. We, we had Sarah come and presented benefits and where we're at and our numbers. Uh, they, they change through the year, obviously with new teachers and things. But it looks like, uh, there's a few more shifting to the H S A, uh, which I think is common around, uh, the country. And I think it's just, uh, as a whole, it, it looks like we did increase a little bit in those not, are waving, right? And for reasoning, I don't know, but that's, that was kind of a, an interesting fact. But appreciate all those individuals, uh, that, that reported and, and all the efforts to get through the audit and then to do the finances. So thank you all, appreciate you.
So the Policy Committee, uh, normally Robin and I both go this month. She went and I'm going next month for her. So, um, I don't have a lot of detail on that, but they introduced two, uh, new policies for tonight. They're both on grievance procedures. And then we are kind of, I've been doing some reading that Robin sent me. Um, we're gonna be working on a safety policy. And so they've sent us sample policies and former policies and different things to read up on. And I believe, is it Ryan Monn that's coming to talk with us about that? Yes. At Policy Committee next month? Okay, so, um, I think that one's coming down the wire, but it's not on the agenda tonight. And then Facilities Committee, do you wanna take that? Do you?
Whatever you want.
I want you to take it.
I can do it if you want me to.
Yeah, I, I didn't take any notes on that one.
Um, not a ton on facilities. Things are going great at the preschool. They, um, you know, you always have your, your outline. Um, not a ton on facilities. Things are going great at the preschool. They, um, you know, you always have your, your outliers out there, so. Um, we found out that the power line has got to go underground instead of over, and so, um, we're working with Rocky Mountain Power. Is that the correct name? Uh, there'll always be Utah Power to me. Rocky Mountain Power to get that accom- to get that accomplished. Um, Vernal City and UNA County spent a lot of money up there and, um, to see that there was no overhead power lines in that area. And they want it kept, they want it kept that way. In fact, they're going to insist that it's kept that way. And so, we got to put that power line, um, underground, so it backed, we, you run three steps forward and you get backed up too, but, um, progress on the preschool is going as well as I think it, it could be. We're getting really close to pavement if it didn't already start.
Not, not yet. They started putting the road base down.
And so, we're getting really close. The weather holds for us. Um, we'll get that pavement done this fall. Um, I think the only other real thing that, um, takes a long time, the blue buildings behind UNA Middle School. Um, in order for, um, us to be able to get them put up for bid, there's still some storage stuff inside of them. Um, the power comes in at the bottom of the last building, so it's got to be moved to the north building and hooked back in. Um, the gas and the water, I believe Donnie reported, come in to the middle in between the third and fourth building, so it's got to be moved from there, because we got to keep the first two buildings functioning. So, um, there's still a little bit of legwork there before we can put them on the public website and get rid of them. I believe that's, did I miss something Superintendent or Tanya?
No, but just a point of clarification, you know, the, the Vernal City, um, there isn't an ordinance against putting the power lines in, uh, above ground. But they've strongly encouraged us and to be good partners, it's probably going to cost us a little more to put them underground. Uh, but I think we really should honor that, board members. I, that's, that's how I feel about it. Uh, again, when they put that corridor in there, they did spend extra money to, to, to put all the utilities underground, so. Uh, so, yeah, it'll, it'll cost us a little more, but in the end, I, you know, I think keeping that partnership with them is important. And, you know, honestly, I, I appreciate when you drive through that corridor and you don't look at power lines. So, that's just me.
Any questions about facilities, board members, that you guys have had?
Well, I'm just glad he called them power lines instead of telephone poles, so.
Okay.
See, and nobody likes those ugly power poles.
Um, I don't know if I've reported on this before or not. The Gleins property has been put on the market, so it's on the market for sale. And so, I think that's pretty well everything on facilities right now.
Oh, I did notice the 1500 South Crosswalk did get their lights in. So, it looks much safer when you go by there and you can see it forever, the blinking. So, I don't know if that was brought up in Safety Committee, I don't.
That's great.
So, yeah, it looks, a lot of people were hitting me up about that, you know, because the kids were walking across there in the morning and it was still dark, but now you can definitely see for the whole block and see those lights shining, so.
I haven't been there for a while, Todd, so the lights are up and going and the kids are starting to use it out of the housing addition?
They have two lights, or just posts with the crossings on the side, and they're just, they're just blinking lights, almost like on a cop car type flashing lights on the sides, but they're, they're really bright, so it, the kids push the button and it turns it on, and so it's, I think it's, hopefully it's helpful, saves the, saves a life or an accident there, so. Thanks to the city, or I assume the city put that in, correct? So.
That'd be county, right?
That was a city-county thing, and I don't know which one.
I don't know what one ended up with.
But thanks to one of them, we did not pay for that.
Yeah.
Right.
And so, they was, they was really good to help. When the Superintendent says keeping good relationships with people, we got that whole project done with very little expense out of UNA School District's pocket. Um, from the street clear into the school, there was very little that we had to do, and so them, them relationships are important and...
You bet.
And, and so, that's what he's talking about when he talks about things like, like that, that they're willing to help, that they feel like that the safety and the well-being of the kids of UNA County is part of their responsibility also.
Well, you look at the Discovery Trail Project over there, you know, the city, that was all spearheaded by the city, and, uh, the grant that they receive benefits our kids every day and makes, makes things safer for them, so it is a great partnership.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, with that being said, we've already done the book study, number two, correct Superintendent?
Yep.
All right, so I wasn't missing something. Um, policy revisions, policies for approval on first reading. Um, this one's Dr. Leece's, and we'll let her explain it to us once she gets here.
Okay. All right, so you're going to see two policies tonight for first reading, and they are connected, but I'll try to introduce them separately so you can see what's happening here. The first one is Policy 0020730. That's a board policy, and it was part of, um, in the calendar for the policies that you were, you were reviewing last year. And I took that on to do some research. That was another policy that was from 1985. So, um, you'll see in Board Docs, after extensive research, including looking to other districts to see how they were handling grievances, um, I reached out to our legal advisors. You'll see an email included in Board Docs with their recommendation of eliminating this policy. Um, so I'll give you a minute to look at that, but then I can move on to the next policy, because it's related.
Board members, when you're ready for to move, you ready for to move on to the next one? We're ready.
Okay, so tonight we'll be asking you to eliminate that policy. Uh, with a new policy being introduced, uh, Policy 0030950. I'll take that as soon as I'm done, huh? Um, so, you'll notice that we're moving this one to 003, which is the Administration section of our policy manual. This is a new policy, Parent and Community Member Grievances. Now, if you took time to read that email from the legal counsel, and based on the information we have, we are not required to have a grievance policy for the community. We handle student grievances in the Student section of our policy. I mentioned those policies there. And we handle employee grievances in the 005 section. You can see the policy I mentioned there. However, we believe it's in the best interest of, of the community and for our administration to have a policy that we can direct people to, that tell them the process for filing a grievance. So, this is a new policy. It will help both you as the board and also our principals to be able to direct people where to go. One of the main things that we, that's important when a grievance is filed is that, um, that it's handled at the lowest level possible. That it's handled by the people who are most knowledgeable about the situation that's being grieved upon. So, that's really emphasized in this policy, and I'll let you take a minute to look at it and any questions you might have.
I would only add that it probably, obviously, we should go to the lowest level and work through the process. Um, but I think at some point, it could, I, I think that people should feel like they can reach out to any board member if they have a concern. As a parent, that's what we're for. We're all representatives in different districts, and so they're going to reach out to whoever they probably know better or, or is in their district, so I think that should be included.
Any suggestions on a wording that we could add? I mean, and we can add it before we approve it on second reading.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
We can take that feedback to the Policy Committee and maybe...
Yeah.
Because we don't want it to sound like they can't call certain people.
Yeah, that's all.
Ms. Linnan?
Superintendent, yes.
In 2.1, uh, it could just say, although, community members can reach out to board members at any time, grievances or complaints should, should be handled at the lowest level. So, that, that would resolve that, I would guess, right? Make it more explicit.
So, so saying that, I, I mean, that's, we've always had kind of, I, I guess maybe it's just a working understanding that, that if we're called, we ask them to go through that process. It has never been in writing anywhere? Has it always just been?
It's never been in writing.
Yeah, we've never really had a policy of this nature, so this is new.
Yep. Over that process. That's, that's what I was wondering, because I, I didn't recall reading it anywhere, but, but that, that seemed like, and it is basically the lowest level, but it, I, I just don't know if I like the terminology, the lowest level. I just, that's one of those that, and I don't want somebody at the lowest level to think, that's, I'm the lowest level. I, you know, if it's a teacher, if it's a coach, if it's a, I just, I, I don't know if I like that terminology.
Yeah, it references the chain of command, and I think, I think in our organization, people understand that, but, but you're right, that maybe community members don't. And then the other thing, Dr. Leece, is using shals for a, for a policy that applies to the community, um, that's probably not, yeah, the best. It, we can't really force community members to do anything, right? I mean, it, so that, that's just another consideration to take back to the, to the committee. We can use shals for staff, right? Because we, we can enforce a lot of things with staff, but we really can't.
We can't.
Can't with the community.
Yeah.
If they, if they want to call a board member, they certainly can, right? So, so we want to encourage, encourage them rather than...
And I'm sorry, I don't have a better name for that or, or the shal.
I can look into some other word.
Next level would work, you know?
Yeah, the, I don't know, the, the chart or whatever, you know, I, I don't know. It's just, just a way that the, that the public reading this would know that I, I really, you know, because a lot of times they tell me, yeah, I've talked to the coach, yeah, I talked to the AD, yeah, I talked to the principal. You know, and I, and I, I need somebody else, and that's, you know, do, do they come to us first? Some ti- a lot of times they come to the board first. And we try to get them to go through that process, but numerous times, they've, they've said, yeah, I've been there, now I'm coming to you, because I don't know where else to go. And oftentimes, I, and I think all of us have directed them to the Superintendent at that point, and, and then maybe...
And maybe we just put, resolved at the school level. You know, so I'm sure we could, I'm sure we can wordsmith it. I don't like that lowest either.
Okay.
Yeah. So, I can, like, hurry and make some changes, or you can just go ahead and approve it on first reading tonight, and I'll take that feedback back to the Policy Committee. And, and we'll address those changes before it goes on second reading.
Yeah, I think where this is first reading.
Yeah.
You don't necessarily need to make the changes tonight. We can go ahead and approve it as it is on first reading and knowing that those changes will go through Policy Committee.
Absolutely, I've made some notes, so.
So, in 22 dot 1, 2 dot, 2 dot 1, you use the word shall, and I, and I think that, that's appropriate there. Uh, to make sure that we are getting back with them, because oftentimes I don't know if, you know, as a board member, I'm, I'm hoping that, that whoever I sent them to got back to them, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so when we're referencing what our employees should do, we can use shall, but when we're referencing community members, we may need to look at may or can or...
Should.
Is encouraged.
Or should, or encouraged, okay. Perfect, thanks for that feedback. Feel free to email anything else if you see it between now and when we meet for Policy Committee.
Hopefully, everyone understands that it's not because we're favoring the parents over the staff, it's because legally, we have no power to enforce a consequence if they don't follow it, so there's no point in putting up a policy that we can't do anything about.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Dr. Leece.
Thank you.
Policies for approval on second reading. I'm Elyba, well, School, Library, Media Center.
The School, uh, Library, Media Center, there are a few changes from the first, uh, board meeting. Uh, if you'll see 2.0, um, where we struck through, that, for some reason, that wasn't stricken the last time, and it should have been. Um, I'm not sure why that was landed there, and then, I'm not sure if this is, if you look at 5.0, I know there was talks about this, this sense of material challenges and definitions. Now, definitions is misspelt, so just to know, I got to add an, an I, and I can't blame anybody but me, because I'm the one who put it here. Um, but the challenges and relevant definitions would refer to, uh, the evaluation and selection of instructional materials policy. I don't know if that hits home, if that's clear enough, if you have a challenge with the library books, I wanted to know that the, instead of adding all the definitions to this policy, we already have definitions in the other policy.
Seems like I was the one that brought that up, if, if I recall, I think that...
We took it to Policy Committee and that's...
As, as long as that, I, I think we were asking for a, possibly a hyperlink to it or something like that? Is that, was that our thought?
We can, I believe. Can we? We can hyperlink it.
Or, sorry, that was my thoughts.
No, I, I'm okay. I mean, I think, just to make it easier, I, I don't want people diving into all the policies. I'd rather, if we can link the policy here for them to refer to it, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay, I apologize, maybe this is somewhere else, but, um, this doesn't show any way for a parent to ex- like, a process for them to come if they do have something that they feel is, might need to be removed. Where is that?
They would refer to the other policy, which would show the...
Okay, we've probably talked about this before.
That was kind of why I maybe hyperlink to that policy, so they know where.
I mean, if you want, we could, we could be redundant and we could add the definitions and the, the, the sense of the material piece in both. We could do both.
If I remember, it's quite lengthy though, right? The definition side of it was, and we didn't really want that in policy.
I thought we discussed referencing it, though. I thought we...
With a hyperlink or referencing, and so we did reference it, but the hyperlink's the, maybe the easier way to do that. I don't know.
Now, we don't put the process in here, it's just our poli- our, you know, our policy is here, what we have to do, but, uh, we do have a process that we follow. Uh, and it'll explain in, in the policy what the, their steps are.
So, 5.0 does reference it, and we, it's really hard to put a hyperlink in policy, because sometimes parents have the, or, or community members or staff have the paper copy.
Yeah, you're right.
5.0, where are we looking?
Oh, it's...
In the second policy?
No, in the, in the library policy. Third, uh, second page.
Second page, 5.0.
Bottom.
Right there. Wait, what are you on? You're on something different.
Maybe I'm on the right one.
Are you on, are you on the top one? Go back to here.
I'm on the evaluation and selection of instructional materials.
Yeah, that's the, we'll get to that.
That's the next one.
We're on 006.0150, Tanya. Now go down to 5.0.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay, sorry.
I'm good with where it's at.
Yeah, that's good.
If everybody else is...
And I'm sure, uh, next, uh, fall, we'll revisit this again, so we can, we can add it if you like.
I think, I just should have read it ahead of time. It looks good.
No, you're fine. They're, they're both very similar, so it can be confusing sometimes.
Any more on that one, board member? You okay to move forward?
Yeah.
It's yours too, Amy. Um, evaluation and selection of instructional materials.
And for this one, um, there really were no changes from the last, from the last board meeting. Pretty straightforward. Um, you know, it is substantially different than our first policy, uh, just with the new code, uh, new state lit- uh, literature, but I mean, it has the definitions and it has the policy and what we are required to do, uh, anytime there is a challenge. And it requires us to have a, a process of selection, um, so that we are not put in a situation where we select a book or books that, uh, that put children in harm's way.
You actually have a hyperlink in this, three dot four dot one, that actually accesses that information as well.
I really think you could, I don't know, Superintendent, I think we can hyperlink. I know that if you have a paper copy, obviously you're not going to, but if you're on the, I don't see why if, if, uh, the parents at home, uh, why should they, why can't they just click that button, so.
Yeah.
I'm not opposed to that. If you want to go back.
Yeah, when I saw this one, I just clicked it real quick to see if it worked, and it worked fine, so.
Yeah, the only thing that we have to be careful of is if those links ever break, or.
Yeah, they're, they're sometimes more challenging to maintain than they are to, to throw in. It's the main, every time you go through and change that policy, or change that link, then you've got to make sure you update that policy, and so I can see what you're saying, Superintendent. We see that a lot in.
Yeah, when, when this thing is reviewed next in, uh, twenty fifty-five.
That, that hyperlink won't be there.
Yeah, we might, we might have a problem with that link, but, I'm just being sarcastic, but that's kind of the reality.
That probably is a key about hyperlinks, is, is oftentimes it may no longer direct you.
You have to have a process to go through periodically and check it anyway, so.
Yeah, I'm good either way.
Okay.
I have a question about three point four point two.
Three point four point two.
So it says, after receiving recommendations from the superintendent, the board shall adopt or approve instructional material in an open and regular meeting of the board. Maybe, maybe it's just the way I read it. I think the intent was to say that it'll be done in an open and regular meeting of the board. But it, it seems like it should say, shall consider the adoption or approval of instructional material in an open and, because it makes it sound like they shall adopt it.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, good, good caption.
So instead of saying the board shall adopt or approve, you want the board shall consider?
Yeah, consider the adoption or approval of instructional material, yeah.
This one is on second reading, Dr. Lee, so can we change that?
Add that to it.
Okay.
Right, add that down.
Can you do that, Tanya?
Yeah.
We can, we can do it.
I can write it down, too.
Okay.
I think Tanya's getting it put in.
We can, that's fine, we can do that. Do you really want me to play with the? If you want me to, I will. Tell me.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just read it with emotion.
Okay. I was.
We're good.
I am not good at this, yeah.
Anything else on, on that? We good?
Looks really good, thank you.
Board members, you guys done with Jaime? Thank you, Jaime.
Thank you.
Dr. Lee, staff cellphone stipends.
I'll, I'll take that one. So.
I only know what they write.
Yep, no, I, I got it. Um, so if you'll look at, at the memo, uh, and, and then, essentially, this is just an adjustment to the policy. Kim can probably speak to this to some extent, too. Uh, but, uh, thi- this is, uh, an increase in the, in the monthly staff cellphone stipends uh, from fifty to sixty, is that correct, Kim? And so, we had to, we have to adjust the policy to match that, because it actually mentioned the fifty dollars in the act- in the policy. So, so that's what we're asking for the board to, to adopt. We, we did bring this to you last month, and I don't think there's any changes since last month.
Okay, right, and we, we did chat a little bit about this in our finance committee meeting as well, and so I, I asked that, Kim, Kim, that question as, as to the process of these teachers are using these phones, basically.
Basically, no teachers that have a cellphone, maybe one or two.
Yeah.
In an outbuilding.
That are, yeah, or out.
Off campus.
Off-campus type things, so.
Basically administration, maintenance, transportation, people that need it when they're on the road.
So it makes sense to me nowadays. Any questions, board members?
Okay. Items requiring future board action, um, minutes? I don't know whether we're hitting Kim with questions, or Holly's, board members, do you?
I think we were good.
All the responses that I've seen, the, the minutes were good.
Yep.
Okay. Ready to move forward then, board? Contracts needing board approval. Kim, do you want to walk us through that? Or is the superintendent, who is playing, who is?
It's up to you, Kim, do you want me to do it? I can, I can do it, yep. So, uh, I, it's actually the memos from me, and Kelly helped me, Kelly Wilson helped me with this. She's, she's really taken lead on, uh, a couple of these things here, uh, as of late, so we appreciate her work on this. Uh, so, the recommendation, on the first one, it's the, it's the approval of two additional electric school buses, and just some, just some background, uh, through the EPA Clean School Bus Rebate Program, we had the opportunity to apply for two more buses. Uh, we, we did, uh, our application was, um, accepted, and, uh, that funded most, but not all, of the price tag on those buses. So if you remember, board members, as, as we have just discussed this over the last several months, the, the sentiment was, is that if, if we have to pay, you know, another hundred, or a hundred and fifty thousand, or whatever on top of that to get, well, we might as well just buy a propane or diesel buses. Um, so we work pretty closely with the Department of Environmental Quality, that's a, uh, an actual organization here in the state of Utah. And, and if you remember, when, when we did the ten buses, they, they supplemented and paid for, I, I don't have the exact percent, but I want to say it was about thirty percent of that bill, right, to help us with the infrastructure, the charging stations, and, and the, uh, the amount of the buses that weren't covered by the, uh, by the EPA. So, anyway, I, I, I work closely with, with them, and, and they did agree to, to go ahead and fund the chargers and the excess cost for those buses, and you can see, uh, at the bottom of the memorandum, there's actually a letter dated August twenty-ninth. They're between grants, so they're closing out one grant and, and opening another, so there wasn't a nice formal process for us to apply. Um, but they did write us a, a letter, uh, indicating that we are going to receive those funds. And so that will happen before the end of this fiscal year, and, and so with that, you can see the, the breakdown, um, toward the bottom, so the, the cost of the two electric buses was, uh, nine hundred and fifty-five thousand, five sixty. Cost of the Level Two chargers was, uh, ten thousand, one hundred dollars. Five thousand for the, was the estimate to install the chargers. So the total was nine hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and sixty. And, uh, and then, we received through the EPA, six hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And the D E Q is, uh, committed to, to sending us two hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. So, that'll cover the total cost of, of these two additional electric buses. So there'll be zero dollars spent from our, uh, from our capital fund for the, for the two buses, from, from any of our funds.
Yeah, appreciate that, Superintendent. I think, I think the key is, is, is it, when I, I visited with Mark, Mark, is it all right if we ask Mark to come up? I've got a few questions for him on that. So, so Mark, Mark and I didn't have the greatest cellphone connection at the time, so I think he, I think he got kind of some of my questions already, and, and hopefully, I, I think he's been able to research it a little bit, but. So, so I, I had some questions simply on the cost, not, not so much the cost, I know we as a, we as a board or as a school district are not paying a dime for these buses, and that's always a plus. I mean, it's hard to turn away two more buses. We purchase normally three to, two to three buses every year.
Four to five.
Four to five, and every year, and we've kind of reduced that, and so now, last year, you only, I believe, purchased one bus, and that was an activity bus, correct? Am I?
Uh, yes.
And so, i- in the future, we're going to continue to, to not have to purchase as many buses for a while, because now that's twelve buses that, that should be running good. But at what point, I guess the public's asking, at what point, uh, does the warranty run out in these buses? And, and we're, I think, Mark, you're well aware of the fact that, that some of them, the same repair on a diesel bus versus a electric bus is, is three times the amount sometimes, and, and so, there's that consideration. At what point does, do the warranties wear out, and maybe we have this escalating repair budget that we need to fill? And, and is it really worth purchasing more of these buses if, if we are going to have an escalation at some point, and, and it's going to cost us a lot to keep them maintained, and all of a sudden, we're going to have to purchase ten new buses again? I just, I'll let you kind of refer, and, and the other questions, I think, are, you know, cost savings, I don't think is a, a big issue, but I, I think the maintenance, my understanding, and I asked you the question, if I'm throwing all this at you, because I think you're ready, but, uh, as, as the fact that, uh, the maintenance that has been happening at this point has been, uh, on warranty. And, and again, then, there were the issues with the charging stations. In the past, I think we've had some, some students that were cold on buses, or, or vice versa, and it, they weren't able to turn on the heaters because of the reduction of the power in the bus, and, and those type of things, but I, my understanding is those are taken care of with the new charging stations, I'll let you respond to those.
Okay.
I might have some more before you're done.
Let me first respond to the warranty. Uh, part of the, receiving the money from the EPA is that the federal government requires that we keep these buses operational for five years. Okay, after that, the district makes decisions on these. But with that, we have a, an eight-year warranty on the batteries, um, that includes labor and any travel or towing that they have to come. We, we bought Bluebird buses, which is, uh, the, the batteries and the, um, the engine, or the, or the motor, um, is all Cummins. Uh, so it, we have a good, solid company behind that, and they've been here for, the powertrain warranty, which is, um, the motor, and, uh, some of the other, uh, things that are high dollar is five thousand, excuse me, five years or a hundred thousand miles. And, like I said, the battery is eight years and a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles is the warranty.
So, a hundred and twenty-five thou- at what point do these buses, you're using them on shorter routes, right?
Yeah, we, we have them on inner-city routes, which are some of our shortest routes. We will, we will not exceed the miles.
That's what I was assuming.
Right.
I thought you told me that, but I was just clarifying.
Right, uh-huh. So, so we're looking really at the years, the timeframe. So we're, we're, we're going to reach out there and tell the warranty to meet the requirement with the EPA, does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So, um, but, uh, the answer to the other question, let's see here, um, it had to do with, uh, what was the other second?
The heating on the buses and those type things.
Oh, the heating, yeah, well, well, let me explain, uh, we just barely got the infrastructure into place, uh, it, it'd be, at the middle of September. Last year, we had to use what was called trickle charging, so we had to set up some, um, different two, twenty-two eighty plugs, some over in the north building, some in this building here, some in the bus garage, and we even had some in our spare garage, which is not enclosed. As it got colder, uh, the, the buses that were outside, it's that, uh, inside the bus, the heat of it, uh, it took quite a bit to get that heated up and not use so much of the battery, um, as well as, over the weekend, our trickle charging takes about, um, our trickle charging, uh, would take about fourteen hours to fully charge a bus, so when they come back in on a weekend, the bus would be completely charged, but then they'd use it in the day, and they'd plug it back in. By the end of the week, we had to be pretty conservative on the energy that we were using on the bus. We don't have that problem anymore, because we know we have our chargers in place, and they can charge a lot faster than what we were doing before. But what we, we only had about a week's period of time last year that we had to, uh, put somebody on a spare bus and, and make some changes and get all the buses inside. Does that make sense? So we made some changes and, and got those buses all in, inside the building, which mitigated the problem with, with the heating component of that. So, the buses, if they're inside in the wintertime, we now have fast chargers, they can come in and get a DC fast charge, they can do a, a complete charge of the DC fast charger in about four hours, completely charge the bus, and so, uh, last year, we were benefited by not having an extreme winter like we did the winter before, but we're ready for an extreme winter on these buses this year, because we can quickly, uh, charge them, and, and they can run those heaters at full capacity. The, also, the bus was, once you got down to thirty-five percent on the battery, then part of the heating component would, would turn off and say, we have to conserve the energy to get you down the road, does that make sense?
Yep.
But again, I, I think that that's going to be mitigated because of our charging infrastructure now.
Great.
Um, in terms of, uh, the reliability, they've been pretty reliable. I mean, I, anytime we get any type of buses, whether it's a diesel bus or propane bus, we have issues, and so there's been a few little issues, um, but, uh, we've had great support from Cummins. The Cummins, uh, repairman here, or the mechanic, has been, now been trained, and he can service them here locally. Before, we were having to have people come from the Wasatch Front, but they were very responsive to that. Uh, they have to be high voltage trained and, and so forth, um, to, but now, uh, the gentleman over at Cummins, his name's Dustin, uh, he comes right over and helps us whenever there's an issue or concern.
So that was the other, one of the other concerns was, we're having to bring mechanics from outside to, to fix these.
Right.
Buses, and so.
Yeah, we can, we can fix the low voltage stuff, I mean, the lights, interior lights, and other things of that nature that, or a lot of the things that we work on, on, on the other buses. But it, it has to do with high voltage, um, the motor and a couple of other components, we have to have, um, the Cummins mechanic.
So the life expectancy of this electric bus compared to a, a diesel bus or a gas bus?
Well, the industry tells us that it should be the same, uh, yet, uh, we, we'll see.
I, I think it's a cheap test, in, in a way, when you look at it that way, uh, but it's, you know, and, and you told me yesterday, I believe, that there's, there's, there's issues with any new, new buses.
There is, I mean, uh, to be honest with you, when I came into this industry, um, and I seen as many problems as with, with even with new buses, I thought the public would never put up with that with their personal vehicles. We, we have major components go out, and it's, and I've even bought from different vendors, there's only about five or six major bus providers or vendors in the country, and so, uh, there, there are issues, as long as you got a good warranty and, 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 and people are pretty responsive. So, we haven't had, um, major downtime with these electric buses. We had to have, replace a couple battery modules, uh, that requires them to be, uh, taken out to the Wasatch Front, they truck them out there. But I've been pleasantly surprised how bad, how fast we get them back. Uh, about a week and a half, where I've seen other buses that take months to get back. So they're very responsive, they have been, so that's been pleasant, a pleasant surprise. I hope that that continues to be the case. But Cummins is really, um, pushing hard to make sure that we, they resolve the issues.
I have a question, I don't know if you know this off the top of your head, but how much does it cost if, like, just over time, the battery wears out? How much does it cost to replace those batteries, and how frequent do?
Well, I, I, I'm sure the cost is very high, I, I, I don't know, to be very honest with you, um, pri- you know, I, it's hard to, with the change in technology, what the price would be after the warranty period versus it is right now, I, 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 I don't know. Um, I know that a lot of, on our other buses, things are very expensive, too. But, uh, I, I assume that the cost is going to be higher than some of the, um, of our other buses with some of the other things, but, again, we have the Cummins, good Cummins, behind them, and they've been very responsive. So I, I'm sorry, I don't have the.
No, I'm sorry, I know, I was just throwing that out.
So Mark, again, there, some of the, some of the concerns are that those buses, we have to give up, or we have to destroy, basically, drill a hole through the motor type thing, you know, we've, apparently, we have buses that fit that category very well, and you, you don't seem like you're, you're too fond of, or too worried about getting rid of a couple of more buses, but, uh, it just seemed like, you know, with ten replacements, are we really to that point where a bus is suffering? And, and I think, just so these guys know, you felt confident that those two buses, that you're going to destroy.
Yeah, the, the buses, uh, most of the buses that were destroyed this last summer were in that period of time that we would have, um, sold them or, or got rid of them, does that make sense? So it wasn't, um, it was time for us to move on beyond them. Uh, they, they, the cost of them staying on the road was, was increasing, and the miles was high. The two buses, and they had to meet a certain criteria to be eligible for a, a, an electric bus replacement. And, and we had, because of, of that situation, we had two buses that were older that we put on routes, uh, this, this last school year, that met the criteria for the two more. So we're actually replacing buses that are very old with the two electric buses that we're going to get, um, this year, so. We've been fortunate in that regard. Uh, there were a couple that we would have probably hung on to for a couple of years, but those that were actually. were actually destroyed were ones that were on the recycle, were on the schedule to be eliminated from our district. So that was, that was fortunate. We didn't have to get rid of any new buses or anything like that. There were buses that were quite a bit older.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate your preparation.
May I answer all the questions? Okay?
For me, you did. Thank you. I appreciate your preparation.
Okay Superintendent, I think that does the bus one. Wasn't there two?
Yeah, there's another one. There's the RFP for Central Cove Preschool Furnishings. So Board members, if you'll click on that memorandum. So, so we went through a process of analyzing the RFP, the responses we got back from various vendors. And if, if you look at the, at the sheet, that's kind of turned sideways, right? There were eight, eight vendors that responded to the RFP. We went through a screening process, so some of those were eliminated, eliminated through the, well, the scoring process. And we had three, the top three, we invited in for interviews, and these were remote interviews. And the interviews went well. I mean, there were three really solid companies. If you look at the, at the one that we're recommending, which is School Specialty LLC, one thing that impressed all of us is they had, they had a team of about seven professionals on that Zoom call that all had different specialty, you know, like areas of specialty. For instance, you know, they had an early childhood specialist that was a former preschool teacher that had then been trained in the furniture industry. They had, they had some, some people that were engineers, like, you know, designers. They had a special education teacher on staff, actually wasn't at the meeting, but, you know, when we look at things like our, our sensory rooms, that's really valuable for us. The thing that School Specialty could do is they, they're a one-stop shop. They have enough relationships with different vendors. They could do everything from classroom desks to office furniture to real specialized equipment for sensory rooms and special education. And really, really impressed us with, with, you know, what they have to offer. So what, what the board would be approving tonight is not, it's not a dollar amount, it's not an order, because we have a lot of work to do still to narrow down what pieces of equipment we want. But what you are approving is, is the quality of the vendor, the vendor that scored the highest, and you can see the scores there. And also, just for your information, this particular vendor also provides the largest discount versus the suggested retail price, the manufacturer's price. So their, their discount was higher than any of the other vendors. So really, two things, it should save us money going this direction, but also provide us with the expertise that we need to make good decisions and, and hopefully keep the cost down on furniture.
Is this normal to do the bid this way without, like, having actual, like, a bid for the cost and everything?
Yeah, it is for something of this magnitude, because some of these vendors don't even offer some of the furnishings that we might need to have. And, and so, kind of the first step is, is to, is to, you know, have, assess and analyze which companies can provide what services. That's really what we're, we're doing in the selection, right? Next step is, is to put the, utilize their expertise to help us know exactly what pieces of furniture would be most feasible and productive for us to have for our students and staff. So that's the next step. And these, these are on state contract as well, so they've already gone through a bidding process with the state for the dollar amount. That's what that discount figure is. Yeah, because they're, they're actually using, some of these vendors use the same subs or furniture manufacturers, right?
So Superintendent, along with that, then, you said you had your top three, and they were really close. Is it possible to get those same top three to give us their suggestions or ideas, and then pricing? And maybe that varies in such a, oh yeah, we didn't think of maybe doing it this way or that way?
You know, one thing we talked about is, had we gone with any of the other vendors, we probably would have had to use School Specialty for some of the special ed and real specialized equipment, because the other vendors just didn't offer it. So we would have been in a situation where we likely would have had to gone to multiple vendors. I, we'll have to research that, Todd. I don't have the answer off the top of my head, but.
Well, you know, just three eyes looking at it instead.
Yeah.
I'm just curious if it, but, so you're, you're telling us, this vendor is able to do the entire job where the others couldn't do it all?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the effort of scoring and digging into that many vendors to start with.
It's quite a process.
Yeah.
It was good. Any questions, Board members? The board will have to approve the final, before we make the final order, the board, the board will approve.
I'm trying to think of what we budgeted this. When you said that, I'm thinking, what, what was that budget for? I'll have to.
I have a number rattling around in my head, but I don't know if that's correct.
I don't either.
We have it, we have it budgeted.
I know, but I, just, did we, I guess saying that, did we give them an estimated budget for this?
No.
Okay.
No. And we won't do that, because as soon as you do, that's exactly what they're going to do.
I was going to say, that, that's what it comes out to be, so.
Yeah, we're going to, really, you know, the other thing we have to do is, we've got to assess some of the existing furniture at the preschool. I was in there today and went through most of their classrooms. And there may be some things that we can, we can utilize. The other question is, is do we furnish all of the classrooms? There may be a couple of classrooms that we're not using in the initial years. So I think there's some things we need to really analyze, and it's real easy just to say, well, we're going to go all out on this, but I, I think we also have to be fiscally responsible and try to keep our.
When we get the price, I think you, sorry. When we get the price, I think you can kind of start to work those, those angles.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you Superintendent. TSSA school plans, Jaime?
So the TSSA plans, actually, in June, you had approved all the plans. And in all of our improvement plans, there's some reference to TSSA or Tata One, if they have Tata One and trust plans, okay? Unfortunately, one of the requirements to, for the funds to be released is, we have to show evidence that TSSA was approved, and nothing in the minutes that said that. So we're bringing them back today. But what I did for you today, and what Sean provided, was just the parts, not the entire plan, but just the parts that referenced the TSSA for each school.
You had me confused there, because I, I thought we had approved that, so thank you.
But moving forward, in June, we'll explicitly talk about the link to TSSA, and it is required. And it's a, it's a healthy chunk of money. You know, we're talking $2 million for the schools. It is an important fund, and we obviously want those funds released, and this is the next, this is the step we have to go through.
Makes sense.
Any questions for Jaime?
No. Not for me, sorry.
Denise, you okay? Danya?
No, good.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Board members, we have a need to go into executive session. And so what will, we don't end this meeting. I'd entertain a motion to go into closed session, and after we're done there, then we'll come back and end this meeting. And our next meeting starts at 6 o'clock. So if someone would like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to enter into closed meeting to discuss the following. Discussion of the character of professional competence or physical or mental health of an individual, strategies, and also strategy sessions with respect to the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property if public discussion may disclose the appraised or estimated value of the property or tend to prevent the board from obtaining the best possible terms.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Todd seconds it. We need to go in by roll call. Would you start, Denise, please?
Maynard, aye.
Massey, aye.
McKee, aye.
Shivers, aye. Dr. Lees, are you going?
The time is 5:18. The board will now go into closed session.
What?
Hey, Sean, I'm on the other recorder.
You can't do that.
...
And the superintendent has that now. We gotta have a superintendent to run the recording. Ali, do you know how to punch the recorder so that we can have on record when we come back in from closed session? Are we recording now? Shauna, do you know how to make it work? I'm putting everybody on the spot. It's alright, they like to giggle at me when I'm all messed up.
Yeah, it's all, that's already on the recorder.
Is it recording? Okay, we just come back in from closed session at 6:04 PM. We had a motion in there to close the closed session. Now we need a motion to close the work session, correct?
That's correct. I'll make a motion to close work session, President.
I'll second it.
Todd made a motion, Denise seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Whenever you're ready, Superintendent.
Welcome to the UNS School Board Business Meeting. Today is October 9th, 2024. The meeting is being held at UNS School District Boardroom, 826 South 1500 East in Naples, Utah. Present at the meeting, present at the meeting is President Dave Shivers, Vice President Tanya McKee, Todd Massey, Denise Maynard, Kim Barnhurst, and myself Superintendent Rick Woodford. And Robin, Board Member Robin McClellan is excused. The time is 6:06 PM. President.
Welcome, everybody. We're glad you're here. Sorry, it's kinda confusing what you have to do to stay legal. So I think we got everything done, so we're legal, so we'll move on. I don't have anybody to tease tonight. I don't think it's Christie's birthday. She had four or five last year. So is it your birthday, Christie? Almost. We're getting, we're getting closer. Welcome, everybody. Hope you feel comfortable being here. We're glad to have you here. Our reverence will be offered by Todd Massey and our pledge of allegiance by Kale Wilson.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for the opportunity which we have to be here tonight. We're grateful for the district, the teachers and staff. We're grateful for their desire to help our students and help them gain a greater knowledge and prepare themselves for life. We're grateful for these individuals that are with us this evening, especially those that have achieved and accomplished great things in their lives. May they continue to do so and may they continue to have a desire to learn and better themselves. We pray this night that thy Spirit will be with us, guide us in our choices and decisions as a board and help us be enlightened. Those that are participating tonight will also be directed in their thoughts as well. We pray again for safety and peace to be upon us. May we enjoy this evening, we pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Could I please ask you all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for your, thanks for your help with that. Wilson, I think we're glad to have him here with us. Last month was his first month, so he's gonna get used to us. We're gonna turn the time over to him for his student board member report.
Alright, thank you for having me. So a couple of weeks ago, we had our homecoming week and it turned out great. Friday, we had our homecoming parade. Community came out, was a good time. That rolled into our football game, where we ended up beating Mountain View 44 to 23. So from that victory, we went to the homecoming dance the next night, Saturday night, and 900 people showed up, which was a pretty good turnout for a school dance. After that, volleyball had a fundraiser for childhood cancer awareness and they raised about $1,800 the other night, which was another good thing. Soccer had a bye week, so their second round of playoffs will be Tuesday, the 15th, at home at 4:00 PM. And then football senior night is tomorrow night. We'll honor our seniors at 6:45 and then the kickoff for the football game will be at 7:00 PM. We're rolling into scare games with Halloween right around the corner. This is when we have a bunch of students sign up to be on teams and we do a bunch of spooky activities to kinda get everyone involved and have a good time. And that rolls straight up into Halloween where we're gonna have another good time. We're all gonna wear costumes to school and have a good day there. And then two of our seniors at the high school, James Kinsey and Lois Lyman, just received letters of commendation from the National Merit Scholarship Corporation for their scores on the preliminary SAT. Only 34,000 letters of commendation were sent out to students across the nation this year.
Thank you, Wilson. Yeah, good report. I'm gonna turn the time over to the superintendent for celebrations.
Okay, thank you, President. Always the best part of the meeting when we get to celebrate our students and staff. We're gonna start actually with a, with a staff celebration, so if I can have Tana Baumgartner, our principal from Ashley Elementary, come up. And was somebody gonna accompany you? Was Chris coming up too, or just? Come on up, Chris. Yes, yes.
So Chris Laborum's gonna join us. This is Alyssa Cook. We're so excited to present her tonight. And she's one of our BTS teachers, so she splits between two schools. So she's part-time at my school and part-time at Davis and it kinda flip flops the, the time that she spends at those schools. Is that good?
That's great.
Okay. So, um, we were so thrilled when it was announced that our very talented Ms. Alyssa Cook was on it. I gotta read it, cause it's like a long title. She had been awarded the Educator of Excellence for October by the Utah Dance Education Organization. So this is a prestigious award and Alyssa goes above and beyond. So last year, she was at our school for four days a week. She's at Chris's four days a week. Last year, she organized for us, every single one of our students learned to dance. And I have almost 500 kids, so that's a lot of kids to get dancing. And then for Christmas, during Christmas time, she put on a concert where essentially all of the students came, they performed, their parents were invited, their grandparents, whoever wanted to come. For that performance, Jeff Lysick and I joked that half the town was there because literally we couldn't have fit another person in our school to watch that dance performance. So it was truly, truly amazing, an opportunity that students at Ashley may not have had without Alyssa, Alyssa being there to teach dance to them. So just spectacular, all that she does. She's amazing. Do you wanna add?
Yes. So, dance at school for elementary, I was really kind of going, okay, let's see what this is like. And the first challenge I gave her was to do a May Day program and she's going, what is May Day? And it took me back to my elementary time, watching the May poll and we got the May polls built. She was able to research a bunch of dances from European history and it was fabulous. So, great job.
So we just have a certificate here to present her with. We're so excited that she's part of UNS School District and she, she truly does go above and beyond to do her very best in everything that she does and we're grateful she's a part of our school.
Alright, we're gonna jump into our Students of the Month celebrations. I've had the opportunity to be in dozens of classrooms already this school year and I'm always amazed. You can just see some of these kids that just rise up to the occasion. They really, you know, even when things aren't perfect in the classroom, they're still attentive and they're doing their best to learn and to be good citizens. So this is a great opportunity to celebrate many of these students that do exactly that. They, they rise up above the rest in some way in their commitment for learning and their citizenship or whatever it might be. So, so with that, we'll go ahead and have our principals and Students of the Month go ahead and line up the side, correct, right out the door here, okay, into the hallway? And, and we'll start our celebrations. We're, we're gonna start just according to the, to the information that you have principals. I believe we're starting with the Child Development Center with the preschool, correct? Parents, as, as your students come across, we'll celebrate them, we'll shake their hands and then they'll go out to the foyer out here for a picture and you're welcome to go with them. And we'd sure invite you to come back into the boardroom to celebrate all of our students, okay? Okay, let's start with Central Cove.
This is Bella Schiffer and she is the Student of the Month for Central Education Center. Okay. And here's your certificate. Bella was not very sure about school when we started this year and had a little bit of a hard time coming and being away from mom and dad, but she has become one of the most phenomenal, delightful students you could ever want. She is the best friend in our class, she is a good example, and she's always so excited to learn.
So, it is my privilege to present Ellie Sanchez as Ashley, Ashley Elementary Student of the Month. Ellie's a fourth grader and she brightens my morning every morning, her and her cute little sister that's sitting on the front row too. Every morning come in with smiles on their faces and they hug my legs and it just makes my day. They are the best students. Mrs. Fully could not be here tonight, but she insisted that she write something that I read because she just thinks Ellie's so amazing and she's the one that nominated her. So she said, "It is so much fun having Ellie Sanchez in class." And I wish you could see like she bolded and made that part like bigger. "We love seeing her sweet face each morning as she comes into the classroom. She comes into class, gets busy working on her assignments, participates in class and follows all the instructions. Ellie is such a hard worker and has a very positive attitude. Besides being a great student, Ellie is also a great person. She was always ready and willing to help any classmates who need it. She is friendly, kind and always smiling." That part's true. Ellie's hard work, passion for learning and a desire to do well is a great combination for success. How we enjoy having Ellie in our class this year. So congratulations.
We'll let mom and dad get into position here so they can see. My name is Chris Laborum. I'm principal at Davis Elementary. And I have the honor and privilege tonight to present to you Ms. Baylix Gardner. Her teacher writes, "Baylix is our Student of the Month because of her dedication to excellence both academically and personally. Baylix consistently goes above and beyond in class and is eager to learn. She puts her best effort into all she does. She's always willing to help her classmates and fosters a positive classroom environment with her great attitude. Baylix is responsible, respectful, kind and is a leader and role model for peers. I'm grateful to have Baylix in my classroom this year and for all she contributes to our school." That's from her teacher, Emily Goodrich. I have to tell you that as I've watched Baylix in the few years that I've been able to kinda get to know her, she's the kinda girl that you looks you right in the eye. When she talks to you, if you greet her, she looks at you and she says, "How are you doing?" And she is a kind and gentle soul. I just really appreciate, appreciate her. She is genuine in everything she does. And by the way, Davis Dragons are the... Yeah, they are the best. Alright.
I am Christy Watkins and I teach at Discovery Elementary and I'm here in behalf of my principal, Mrs. Crenshison. And this is our Huckston Wiseman. Huckston was selected as our Student of the Month. He is a kindergartner and he is amazing. He comes into class every day and is an awesome helper. He really displays the best qualities of a Discovery Fox. He shows respect to all of his peers, to his teachers and our specialists. And he's also a very, very kind friend. He watches out for those who don't have someone to play with. He includes them. And he sets a good example of how to be of service to me and to his classmates. And the kindness that he shows really exemplifies our Discovery Foxes. And this is our Huckston Wiseman.
I'm Emily Arnold and I'm the principal at La Pointe Elementary. And our Student of the Month didn't make it yet. Her name's Lily Reed Tabapont and this is her teacher and she's gonna tell us all about Lily.
Hi, I'm Erica Stewart. I'm fifth grade teacher at La Pointe. So I picked Lily Reed Tabapont because she embodies all of the concepts of our mission, which is to work hard, overcome obstacles, love to learn and find opportunities to serve. I've been fortunate enough to watch this little girl grow over the last four years when I've been at La Pointe. And if you had seen where she started and where she's at right now, it's truly amazing. So I'm sad she's not here to hear all the good things I have to say. Thank you.
I'm Denise Williams, the principal at Mazer. And my Mazer cub is Trace Roundby. And I'm so excited to introduce him. Everybody needs a Trace in their life. He is so kind and so happy. This is the smile we have all the time. And his teacher is Mr. Nurdin and he's doing parent-teacher conferences tonight. So he wanted to share that Trace is such an upbeat and has such an upbeat and positive attitude. He wants to work hard and wants to do a good job. He has all the qualities of a cub. He is courteous, has the best upbeat attitude and is brave by always being a friend. He's a joy to have in and out of the classroom and we love Trace so much.
I'm Deanna Martino, the principal at Naples Elementary and our Student of the Month is Paige Collette. And she's a fourth grade student and her teacher, Mr. Judd, couldn't be here tonight. We are doing parent-teacher conferences as well, but here is what he had to say about Paige. Paige is a delightful person and I'm lucky to have her as my student. Paige has a wonderful work ethic and is constantly on task without being asked. She works hard and looks for opportunities to improve no matter what the subject. If there's anything that she is not proficient on, she will work on it until she is proficient. She loves sports and excels on the field as well as in the classroom. And look, she's not that big, but she excels in sports. And this is the part I love the most about Paige. She is also a wonderful friend that includes others. Way to go, Paige. Keep up the good work.
Alright, I'm Christina Byer-Jolliffe and this is Fisher Kidd. And he is an amazing student at UNTA Middle School. And Fisher was nominated as our Student of the Month because of his kindness and his kind heart and his caringness. He's always wanting to know how everybody's doing, wishing his friends a good day and he is such a hard worker. If you wanna know what perseverance and persistence looks like, you just come watch this, this guy here. Whether it's PE or in the classroom or making his way through the lunchroom, waving to everybody and saying hello. So Fisher Kidd is our Student of the Month.
Come on up here. I'm Aaron Olson, principal at Vernal Middle School and our Student of the Month is Kale Wilson. I know Kale to, to be one that brings a lot of positive energy to the school. He's very kind and he's very active. His teachers say that he is, he always has a positive attitude and is great about being present and attentive in class. He's willing to work with other students even if they're not his close friends and whatever task he's given, he never complains. He's a hard worker and dedicated. He's always kind and helpful. He's always positive when interacting with, with students and staff and we certainly appreciate that. So congratulations, Kale. So congratulations, Kale. (applause)
Hi, I'm Amanda Brown. I'm the principal at UNTO High School. And Aline Gray is one of our amazing social studies teachers. And I am going to let her brag about our student of the month, Aubrey Vance.
Board and superintendent, thank you for this opportunity. Aubrey is just a wonderful young lady. She is positive. She'll smile for you. She has a beautiful smile, and she radiates in our room. It gives a positive atmosphere. But as a student, we do cold call, and I can call on her anytime. It's a little inside joke there I just found out about, but I won't share that. But she can answer, and it's not just a flat answer. There's something to it. And as we do cohort groups, and I'm walking around, I can hear her leading her group and discussing above what the other groups in the classroom are doing. And she likes social studies, which makes my heart happy, and she understands social studies. And so I just think Aubrey is a lovely young lady and a great example of social studies in US history. So thank you, Aubrey. (applause)
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Rebecca Halverson. I'm a teacher with UNTO Online School. And I'm so excited and just happy to recognize Chloe Carpenter as our UNTO Online Student of the Month. So working in an online school, we have a commitment that we say that we're dedicated to connecting home, school, and future. And I take that commitment very seriously. And I want to start by thanking Chloe's family for also taking that commitment very seriously, because it is a true cooperative effort between the school and the home to help our students succeed. One thing that stands out to me with Chloe is the dedication that she has to her learning. Chloe will turn in assignments on time, so I appreciate that, too. She's very good at turning in her assignments and waiting for teacher feedback, watching to see how she did on the assignment. If she didn't score 100%, if she truly, even if she scores an A, she'll still watch to see what I said and what she needs to improve and what she needs to go back and fix. And that's what learning is about. And that's why I know that Chloe's future is going to be bright, because she takes true ownership and pride in what she does. And I just thank her for that. Thank you, Chloe. (applause)
We have a few parents left in here. Thank you, parents, for your commitment and helping your students succeed. We sure appreciate you. Great job, students. With that, that concludes our Students of the Month celebration. President, we'll turn the time back over to you.
Our school report tonight is going to be by Tanya Baumgardner. Pardon me?
Tana. Yeah, it's Tana.
I'm sorry, Tana. I'll forget next month, too. Thank you. Yes. No. The green light will come on. Push the button down and hold it for a second.
Is that better? Okay. Perfect. I'm just going to slide this over. Okay. I'm glad we actually do this after student celebrations, because now the room's empty again. That's kind of nice. But I'm excited to share a few things that we've been doing at Ash Elementary over the last year and into this year. At Ash Elementary, we are the explorers, and we believe that what explorers do matters. So that is our motto. Uh-oh, this is not a Mac. Okay. So one of the things, I have a couple of things I want to talk to you about tonight and share with you. And one of the first is about family and community engagement and service learning. So last year, when I took this job, superintendent, in the summer challenged me with interviewing as many staff members as I could before school started. So I spent all of last summer interviewing and taking, I swear, 100 pages of notes from my staff on what they had to say. And so obviously through that, themes and patterns popped out. And one of the patterns was a concern over parent and community involvement with our school. And also just concern over opportunities for parents to be involved. So that was something I thought, well, that is not a hard fix. Like, we can just create those opportunities. So last year, I talked a little bit, those first two pictures are about our BTS dance performance. The second two are Dr. Seuss Family Literacy Night that we held. And then the last one is an anti-bullying event. It's called Stomp Out Bullying that we held. And actually, Monday, we had our second one of those. It's a chalk throw. That's why you see all the blue in the air. I probably still have some somewhere in my hair or my shoes or somewhere, somewhere, because we were definitely covered in chalk. But what was interesting is when we held these events, we had, at every event, hundreds of parents. So to say they didn't want to be involved wouldn't have been correct. You know, that was kind of some of the feedback, but just needed the opportunity to become involved in our school. So along with that, this year, we had kind of a unique opportunity present itself to involve our community and our parents. And obviously, it actually just fell right in line with the service learning plan as well that we wanted to incorporate. So I want to introduce you to Marshall. This is Marshall, and he is a fifth grader at Ash Elementary. And in late August, he was struck by a car while he was riding his bike. So the next day after the incident, my social worker and I went to the hospital and visited with Marshall, really his mom. Marshall was pretty out of it that day. I don't even know if he remembers if we were there or not. But we were able to visit with his mom, and through that conversation, Grandma and Aunt were also there. And we had a good opportunity to really talk with them and assess what needs they might have. And it became clear that this was a place that we could help, an opportunity for us as a school to serve. So the social worker and I, with mom's permission, she was gracious enough to let us serve, because sometimes that's the hard part, right, to let somebody help you. So she was very gracious to let us help her. And so we literally came right, like, we were driving back together, and we're already throwing out ideas and what we want to do and goals we want to set and how we want to help this family. So we came up with the title of our fundraiser, and our service project was Mighty Like Marshall. So that's Marshall there. The other picture is just we tracked in our front office what we called Mighty Minutes, which I'll talk about that next. So we had three goals that we really wanted to accomplish, that we wanted to involve our students, our staff, our parents, and also just the community at large, anybody that wanted to participate. So our first goal was we wanted 5,000 minutes of service by students and staff. That was in a two-week period, and we called these Mighty Minutes. And we just wanted them to go out and serve in Marshall's name, right? Go out, find something at your home. We had lots of school. One day, we all came back to school, and all of our doors had positive notes that one of the classes had written on everybody's door. But 5,000 minutes, those mighty minutes of service in Marshall's name. The other thing was we wanted to raise $2,000 to donate to Marshall's family. They were facing some significant medical expenses and other expenses, and definitely an area that they needed some help and support in. And then we wanted, obviously, Marshall's bike was ruined, and he wasn't wearing a helmet at the time, so I was determined to get him a helmet. So we wanted to get him a new bike and a helmet. So in that process, we did this fundraiser for two weeks, this service project. I just want to share, we had some really cool things happen, and there were too many to name, but there were three that really stood out to me that I just wanted to share with you tonight. We rolled the fundraiser out by doing a little video of Marshall, and the whole school watched it. We sent notes home to parents. We had an all-call. We did our Facebook post, you know, everything. So that next day, before school started, I'm in the halls usually, and a little friend, he was a first grader, and he comes up, and he's like, just can't contain his excitement. And he's like, "Mrs. Baumgardner, Mrs. Baumgardner, I was the first one." And I said, "Oh, the first one for what, buddy?" And he said, "Well, I was the first one to donate in Marshall's jar of my own money." And I was like, "Oh, my goodness." And he was just through the moon excited. We'd asked every student to see if they could either earn a dollar or bring a dollar just to donate. So I thought, you know, I'm just assuming in my mind that he's put a dollar in the jar. So, you know, fist bump, we congratulate, you're awesome, buddy, way to be the first one. And I walked back to the office, and I see the big jar. We had a jar in the office with four pennies inside it. And he was so proud. That was his money. That was what he could contribute. That's what he could do. Like, it just even makes me emotional. It was just so cool, such a great experience. Another cool thing that happened, you see there's an envelope there that I've taken a picture of. We had a couple of girls who are fifth graders as well, and they decided that they were going to hold a lemonade stand. And they held their lemonade stand over the weekend, and they came Monday with a big fat envelope. Like, I was shocked how much money they earned. I wondered how long they stood out there, because it was a significant amount of money that they had earned through their lemonade stand. And they, you know, wrote the little note to him and brought all of their earnings from their lemonade stand and put it in the jar. And I just couldn't resist. Like, I had to, I think I still have the envelope in my office, because it just touched my heart so much that they would do that. And then one last thing that I just want to, other experience, if you look, the other picture was better, but if you look closely at that check that I'm handing Marshall, you'll see a little paper attached to the top. So I had a little friend, also in first grade, a little girl, cute as can be, and she came up, and she came to the office, and she said, "I asked my mom, and she just said we didn't even have a dollar to spare right now. But I drew a picture so that I can have something that I'm donating. Can I put it in the jar?" And I just thought, absolutely, right? Absolutely, you found a way that you could serve, something that you could give and help someone out, and you brought that. Absolutely, we're going to make sure. So that's what's paperclipped right there to that big check, because I wanted to honor the service that she had done, the gift that she had brought to give to someone else. So I'm happy to say that we met all of our goals. We were able to get well over 5,000 minutes of service. What's kind of cool is someone had shared our school's post, and Walmart had seen it. And so Walmart reached out and offered and had Marshall come and pick out any bike and any helmet that he wanted. So the community became involved. You'll see the picture there with the SROs, the sergeant over the SROs. Heather Hunting is our SRO. We were a little short as a school at our 2,000 donation, but she made sure through the police officer, I wish I knew the exact name, but some association that she runs, they do the Shop for the Cop and other things like that. She committed that we would meet our 2,000 goal as a school, because she would fill in the gap that we were not able to fill. And then she invited all the SROs to come the day we had the assembly to present Marshall's family and celebrate. So really cool to see all of our parents, all of our family, and then the community at large get involved with this. So obviously, we had to celebrate, right? You would have thought that I had given all of the kids, like, a new car, but it was just an ice cream sandwich. But the cheers when I announced that, hey, we reached our goals and we get our school celebration, that after you eat your lunch today, Marshall's going to be there. You see my social worker as well handing out ice cream sandwiches. Truly, it was a good celebration. And who knew an ice cream sandwich was so powerful, because I did not till after this. But it's just been really rewarding to know that that was a need that came through interviewing my teachers, and we've been able to kind of address that. And we've had so much parent involvement and community support, and what great opportunities for our students there at Ashley. One other thing that came as I was interviewing my teachers over and over, another theme that I just quickly want to talk about was student behavior and student culture. It came up over and over and over, that they were concerned, that they didn't know what to do, they were worried about the positivity. So as I sat down and looked at some of the plans that were in place for Ashley last summer, it was clear that one of the things that was missing was a comprehensive PBIS system. And just a quick reminder, I won't go into deep what it is. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them later. So PBIS stands for Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports. And it's a research-based framework, so it's not like a program that you can pick up and just say, this is what we're going to do. You kind of have to build it within that framework that we use to improve the learning environments for students. It focuses mostly on teaching positive behaviors, preventing problem behaviors, of course, using data and everything that we do, and then reinforcing those positive behaviors that we want to see. So it was clear that was something that was missing. So this kind of led me on. I had to kind of build this as we go. And during that building, I collected some data. And I know you like data, so I want to share some of it with you. It's a little bit different kind of data than you've probably seen before. So I'm going to share, this is last year's, and then I'll show you where we are at this year. So I started collecting data. So you see four things there. Let me just kind of explain what you're seeing. Obviously, the green marks, that's office referrals. So part of the system that we created was like, okay, what are we going to do when a student's misbehaving? What are we going to do when we need support? How are they going to find their way to the office or whatever, right? So we had to build a system for that, which made it easy for us to track. How many kids are coming to the office with an office referral, right? And those were a little bit more of our more serious behaviors that teachers felt they needed support. And the yellow was suspensions, right? And those are our most drastic behaviors. But unfortunately, when I came into Ashley last year, that's kind of what I was facing with some pretty significant behaviors of students being unsafe. The red is what I called responsive. And so responsive is a behavior's already happened that's inappropriate or unacceptable, a misbehavior, if you will, and we're just responding to it, right? So I've got to now deal with this. And then you'll see the blue is preventative. So that means, okay, what are we going to do to hopefully prevent misbehaviors? Like, what are we going to do to reinforce that positive? What are we going to do for our little friends that we know are going to struggle anyway? So preventative, just to give you a couple examples, a preventative that we would count, that would have been counted in this tally, would be, we have one friend, and he comes in every morning right off the bat, and he's upset. It's already a battle. So we thought, well, let's try something. Let's try to prevent. We already know he's coming upset, and then we just shove him into class, and why are we surprised that he has a problem? So every morning, he's greeted at the door. Still, we're going on our second year of doing this, and it's still working. He's greeted at the door, and we walk a few laps around our school on the inside. He walks with myself or my social worker or our behavior aide, and we just talk. How did things go? What'd you do last night? How was your morning? And before you know it, you see him calm, and we're able to send him to class, and he has a significant reduction in his behaviors. So we have quite a few friends that have preventative measures like that, that are really individualized. Then in addition, you'll see in January, you see a really large jump in our preventative measures. Because last year, in January, we rolled out a school-wide system with the Explorer cards. They all can earn cards when they're doing exactly the behaviors that we want to see when they're following our school rules. We have weekly drawings and monthly drawings, and then we have a big end-of-year celebration. So that's why you kind of see the big jump in January. We implemented something new in January. But what this data tells us is that preventing behaviors and being positive works. You see a significant drop in everything else. And if I forward to this year, you see even more significant suspensions or hasn't happened, office referrals are minimal, and yet, obviously, August is small. We were only in school, like, what, seven days or something? So that's partly why the preventative is smaller. But you kind of look at those trajectory lines, and we're on a good path that if we keep being positive with our kids, keep reinforcing the behaviors that we want to see, that it works. And we know at schools that academics is the most important, right? I want to teach kids to read more than I want to do almost anything in this world. But I can't teach them to read if they can't stay in class, if they can't get their behavior under control, if they're not able to focus on what they need to do and what they need to learn. So this was really an important hurdle for Ash Elementary to take on last year, and it's really paid off really well. Like, we're just seeing the benefits in our culture and our students and our behavior. And so anyway, that's what I have for you today, and thanks for letting me come and share that with you.
Board members, any questions for Tana?
On your graph, like, go back one, what's the numbers on the site? Is that number of students? What is that? No, that's the number of actions. Of actions, okay. So the blue and the red, so myself, my social worker, and I have a behavior aide. So the blue actions, these aren't any teacher actions, because that would be way too hard for me to track what they're doing. These are only something that the three of us have done. So it could be, it's those individual kids that we've talked about. It could be that we had 50 kids come to the office to, so when they come to the office, one of us celebrates with them, "Oh, my gosh, what did you do? Let me read your card. I'm so happy for you." So that would be something. Now they're celebrated and get the reward or the praise right with their teacher. Then they bring it to the office, they get praise from us. And then every Friday, we draw 10 of those students, so they have the opportunity again for that. So yeah, that's actually, I want to say September, we were probably somewhere around 1,200 positive preventative measures that we're taking. somewhere around 1,200 positive preventative measures that we're taking.
I just loved hearing about your service project. That was amazing. I just love it. Every, I'm not good at expressing myself, but every bit of it was just amazing. I'm so grateful for your efforts there, and just what a wonderful experience for the kids.
It was. It was life-changing for me and hopefully good for them.
Tana, what has been the biggest thing you've done since you've become the principal there to improve your learning? Has it been the behavior? I wondered whether to ask the question or not because you touched on the behavior a lot, but anyway.
I, I think the biggest thing that I've done isn't one thing. It's building systems so that those systems can run, so that everything runs smoothly, whether it's a system to help intervention, whether it's a system even for tier one, there was a lot of things happening with our tier one that, that shouldn't have been, or a behavior system. But I really do think it's putting into place systems, processes, and procedures so that things can run smoothly. Because when that happens and we have order and structure, then the kids can learn. So I, I don't know that I could say one thing.
That's fair. Anything else, board?
Yeah, I just, I just want to make a few comments. You know, we, we read about the whirlwind, right? And I got to tell you, Tana has been baptized by a fire, so to speak, as a new administrator. She had one heck of a whirlwind, just with various things that have happened in her school. And despite that, she has really kept a focus on, on her students and on staff and student learning and staff development. She's done a fantastic job, so I just wanted to publicly thank you, Tana, for your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Sean, do we have, oh, she's on it, of course. Okay, word to the patron input portion of our meeting. We have none that have signed up here or any that have signed up online. So we're going to move to... Now you got me confused, Denise. I'm up here arguing with myself. It's your fault. We're going to move on to number two, letter A, the consent calendar. They're always teaching me to. I'm just a dumb farm kid.
We did have one come in online late here.
Oh, we had one patron input come in late online. We better go to that.
Let me just see what it... So, President, we don't have a full name on this one. It came in from somebody by the name of Linda, and she just had, all it says is sell of property adjacent to UNTA High School. So maybe just wondering about that, but there isn't a specific question or comment. That's, that's all that I can see.
Okay. All right. Consent calendar. Board members, we can approve the consent calendar in its entirety, or you can break it apart.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar. I make a motion to approve the consent calendar, which includes the August 14th, 2024 amended business meeting minutes, September 11th, 2024 work session and business meeting minutes, contracts needing board approval, the monthly board financial update, and the TSSA school plans.
We have a motion. Denise, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Todd seconds it. Any further discussion, board members? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Policies for approval on first reading. We do both of them together or split them apart?
We have some changes on one of those. That's the second reading.
Yeah, it was on the second reading one, Todd.
I'll make a motion to approve policies for approval on first reading 002.0730, elimination of grievance procedure for allegations of discrimination, and 003.0950, parent and community member grievances.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I would second that.
Todd seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Letter C, number one, policy 006.015, whole school library and media centers. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve policy 006.0150, school library and media centers on second reading.
Denise made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Todd seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Number two, 006.0100.
I'd to make an amended, a motion to approve an amended policy 006.0100, evaluation and selection of instructional materials with this change. 3.4.2, read. After receiving recommendations from the superintendent, the board shall consider the adoption or approval of instructional material in an open and regular meeting of the board.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Number three, 004.0900, staff cell phone stipend.
I'll make a motion to approve policy 004.0900, staff cell phone stipend on second reading.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Tanya, seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we're down to letter number D, personnel changes. Do we have a motion to accept the personnel changes?
I would make a motion to approve the personnel changes, including the six candidates for new higher positions, three LEA, specific endorsements, two current employee... Sorry, tried to enlarge it so I could see it. Two current employee recently assigned to new positions and five candidates to fill extracurricular coaching, coach positions.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Denise, seconds. Dr. Lee, if you'll help us.
Good job, Todd. I usually read those, but you read them for me.
Sorry.
This is good. The LEA specific endorsements, those are licensed teachers who are teaching one or more classes outside of their licensed area, so we can give them an LEA endorsement in order to be able to teach that for this year. For your information, there are three individuals whose employment has or will end also on, on the list there. Any questions for me? I'm good.
Todd?
I think I'm good.
Thanks, Dr. Lee. We're good. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number E, and hopefully this will answer the question that we had that come in online.
Yes.
Approval of the real estate sales contract.
I'd to make a motion for the board to authorize the sale of parcel numbers 04,088,0091, and 04,088,0068, consisting of 35.973 acres to UNTA County for the agreed-upon amount, which will be made public at a later time. For public information, state law requires public entities to provide the first right of refusal to government entities.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
President, I think I can offer that the, the sells price is based on fair market value for this property. That's a good point.
Yes, it, it was appraised, and then we offered it to the government entities that were required to by law. And I think the only other thing that's not pretty self-explanatory is this is a piece of property north of the high school property.
The north and west.
Yes. You ready, board members? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Number three, letter A, purchases over 50,000.
So we have one invoice for purchases for food that's over 50,000. This is normally, we issue an open PO just so they can buy food as they need it. It's already in the budget. So that's the one informational over 50,000.
We don't need to vote on that, do we?
No, it's just informational.
Okay. And with that, we'll turn the time over to Dr. Woodford for calendaring items.
Okay, board members. So there are a few attachments on board docs. If you'll just look at those, the first one would be what you normally see, which would be the, the school and district events for October and November. So again, we've asked principals to send us, you know, any, anything that might spark your attend, your, your, your desire to attend or, or to be a part of. There's quite a bit there with, with Halloween around the corner and some other, some other things. There's, there's Red Ribbon Week coming up. We have four schools that are participating in that specifically. There's, there's quite a bit there. So if you'll just take a minute and look through that, there's some other information as well. There is a conference preview for the Utah School Board Association Annual Conference. It's going to be in Salt Lake City, starting Thursday, January 9th, through, I believe it goes through Saturday, oh, Friday, January 10th. Oh, no, it goes through, yeah, Saturday, the 11th to noon. So sure would encourage you, board members, if, if you can, to, to, you know, let's get registered for that. Shauna can take care of that registration, so. Oh, okay. Yep, great. And our school district's actually presenting this year, so we, we put in a proposal and was accepted, and we're going to, we're going, it's called All Systems Go, and it's, it's, the presentation is going to display how we align everything from strategic planning right on down to our, our coaching program and our six-week cycles and instructional framework. And so it's, it's, it's going to be a, a fun time for, for the school district.
Shauna, how are you going to get the information to know who's going?
I'll send out a survey to the board member.
Yep, there's also October Arts letter with some, some information there, document, and then Bar D tickets for the Bar D Wranglers. It's a Christmas concert coming. Just, just information for, for you board members to consider. That's, that's all I have. Board retreat, is that on here?
Yes.
It is.
Yes, it's on there. November 1st.
November 1st. And Shauna has made arrangements right here in town at the Vernal City Hall. We're going to have a little bit of change of environment for it, which probably will be a good thing, so.
What time does this start?
Say that again?
October 11th.
Yeah, I think we've already shared that with the board, so we're good.
The one that I shared for January was the one that's always...
I know.
The other ones can't line up.
Right. We, we've already discussed that, so we're, we're good. Okay, any questions, board members?
We'll see if the Bar D Wranglers are as good as the Bar J Wranglers were.
One of the singers is part of the bunch.
Part of the cast is the same and parts different.
One individual, I think.
Donnie, not Donnie.
The one that played Grandma on the right.
Yeah.
No.
Board members, that brings us to the bottom of our agenda. Do you have anything else for this meeting, Denise?
Yeah, I've got a couple things. Our board meeting on November 13th wasn't on the consent calendar. It's over in Eagleview, right?
It, it is, yes.
And it starts at 3:30 that time, right?
Yes. So, so the schedule's a little bit different. We're going to provide a full hour for the Impact Aid meeting, and we're actually going to have a student group that will be performing. And we're, we're, our, our goal is to get more parents there so that when Chris Jones and, you know, our, our principals, Emily Arnold, when they give their presentations, we'll have, for Impact Aid, we'll have more parents there, more participation. So that's a little bit of a change-up. Hopefully, it goes well. So we're looking forward to it.
Start time's still 3:30?
I don't have that right in front of me. Do you have that, Shauna?
For what?
For the, let me, let me find it real quick.
It's 3:30. Eagleview is 3:30?
It's 3:30 for the work session.
5:30 for?
5:30 for the Impact Aid, 6:30 for the board meeting. Yep, so we gave an hour there.
And then how did the day in the classroom go?
It was good, yeah. We, we, we just had Representative Chu that came down, and, and he went into, oh, I want to say four or five different social studies classrooms and did a presentation for the kids. He, he, he got, front-loaded it with some questions that, that we emailed out to the teachers and students, students gave, gave some questions that they have, have had, and he was able to answer those questions and just have a, a general discussion with the students. So it, it was good. Yeah.
And then I just wanted to say one, Tana, that was a, I loved how you could tell how personal her story was today, and it kind of touched me. But also, the preschool walkthrough, all those teachers and seeing how excited they were about the rooms and everything, that preschool walkthrough was amazing. So, other than that, just thanks to everybody.
Okay, Todd?
Yeah, thanks. Excited to see where Ashley goes with, with what you've implemented. I, as far as test scores and those type of things, I, I, I'm really excited to see where it goes.
Where's she going?
She's the one. I don't blame her. And Mark, Mark, appreciate, I know I put you kind
of on the spot tonight, but, but as a whole, the electric bus thing has brought some calls and, and some questions as to where we're at as a... as a district and where we're at as a community, a fossil fuel community, I guess you could say, and why are we buying electric buses? But the reality is, at the cost, it's really hard to not make that choice and that decision. And further looking down the road, you know, will those buses be functional or not? I think it's a good test run, and the reality is, I think we've saved some money. We've saved some money, in my understanding, on gas, or our natural gas, or propane buses. And we're calculating that by just having the ability to have our bulk station here as well. So I think you're doing some great things there, and again, appreciate your comments tonight. So thank you all that are engaged. I too, you have to put a hand out to a football team that's going to have a really tough game coming up tomorrow night. And, but yet, a six-and-two record is an improvement that I think they look back on. We haven't been, had a winning season for quite some time. And now that makes the public call and say, okay, you've done some great things with football, now what? You know, now what? And so people love to see improvement. I wish they would look as intensely about where we're at as a... I still call it UNTA School District on the Rise, where we're at with our test scores and those four schools that are where they're at today. And what I'm looking forward is to seeing if all of them are there, or as many as you can be there. I've always said test scores are not always the best thing, but yet it does give us something to look forward to, and it gives us something to be proud of. And so I believe UNTA School District is on the rise. And so thank you, Superintendent, and all of you administrators, as well as the teachers. And we won't say it to the... What did we... What did you change on our... The lower level. So it's not the lower level, but it's the, it's all those individuals that really make a difference when we look at lag goals versus lead goals. Most of those individuals are involved in those lead goals, and that's really what makes a difference in the lag, so thank you.
I just think everybody's doing great things. I really enjoyed... I thought Tana's project, I just loved everything about it because it really involved the kids in something that was really meaningful to them. It was really someone they knew and something they felt that they could participate in individually. I love that. Just wonderful. And I've heard of lots of great service projects happening around the district, and a lot of the teams have been doing service projects. I know the tennis team gathered warm socks for the care center, and I just, I keep hearing good things. So I think it's great to hear the good things that are happening, and I just really appreciate all the effort that goes into everything that happens in this district every day. We have incredible leaders and incredible teachers, and I'm so grateful for all that you do.
Kim? Long as you don't give us a bunch of long numbers, you can comment. Do you have anything you'd like to?
I am amazed at all these presentations, and I really just enjoy being here for the celebrations.
Superintendent?
Well, President, board members, first of all, thank you for all that you do and the commitment that you make. You know, we had a retreat last year and talked about service, right, and adding that component. And we have schools working right now on those service learning plans. They're not due yet, but as you can see, we already have wonderful things happening in the schools. And so it's really not asking our schools to do more, it's just being a little more systematic about it and ensuring that we're mindful to give our students those opportunities. And in this case, you know, Tana's presentation, it was something very authentic and meaningful, and we're going to see more and more of that in our school district, so thank you. You know, we're going to start a little campaign here before the end of the month, and it is called UNTA on the Rise. So you're going to see some advertisements and some things out there in the community. We have wonderful things happening in our classrooms, in our schools, with our athletic programs, our music and fine and performing arts programs, CTE programs. I can go on and on. There's so many positive things happening. Our community needs to know about those things, and they do. They see a lot of it. But there's some things that maybe aren't, you know, we don't put out there as much. So we're going to do that. I think it's important for our community. You know, we work for them ultimately, right? And they need to know of all the good things that are happening. So you'll see that come out here by about the end of the month. I just really do appreciate the dedication and hard work. Again, I've had the opportunity to be in classrooms, and call it what level you want. It's grassroots, it's where the rubber hits the road. It's the most important part of UNTA School District. It's not, you know, the board and the superintendent, but it's the people that are working with kids and making that commitment every day, dealing with hard things sometimes, but persevering through that and doing their best to help kids be successful in our school district and in our community. So my heart goes out to my, you know, just sincere thanks for all that happens with our students in our schools. I very much appreciate it and just want our staff to know, district-wide, you know, how wonderful they are and how grateful we are to have amazing people working with our students.
I'm proud of UNTA School District. I'm proud of you guys. I know we still have problems, and we got some things that, but if we ever quit getting better, we'll start sliding and start getting worse. And so thank you to all of you. I'm proud of you, proud to be associated with you. I'd entertain a motion to close.
I could make a motion to close our business session.
Todd made a motion to close.
I'll second it.
Denise seconds. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?